Call to order, the Granberry City Council Regular Meeting. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, March 18, 2025. We are at Granberry City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street in Granberry, Texas, 76048. I've called to order. Now then, Chaplain Lubin, if you will, please, lead us in the invocation. And then we will have the Granberry ISD Marine Corps Junior ROTC present the United States and the Texas flags, and then we will pledge to each of those being led by these young Marines. Go ahead, sir.
Heavenly gracious, Father Lord, for God in heaven, Creator of all things, Lord, we praise you for who it is that you are and how it is that you provide for us. Lord, we thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ, who is our Lord and our Savior, and him is the promise of life, and him is the promise of everything that we need. Lord, we pray for this meeting tonight, pray for your presence here, pray for the Holy Spirit, Lord, to hover over this room, over each man and woman, and, Lord, that you would guard their minds, their thoughts, the words that they speak, the actions that they take. Give them knowledge, Lord, but give them wisdom with the knowledge for the decisions that they will be making. Lord, we pray for our first responders, our police, our sheriff's office, our fire department, the highway patrol, our firemen and firewomen. Lord, we just pray that you guard them and cover them in your special way. Only you can do it. Lord, we have another request tonight. A single father lost his only son yesterday, five years old, in a tragic traffic accident. I pray, Lord, that you cover him with peace, that you give him courage, and, Lord, that you show compassion to him. Especially for the school bus driver that was involved in that accident, Lord, give her peace. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Gentlemen, we'll now have the presentation of the colors.
Color, hold, left, face, cover, freeze it, colors. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Ready, cut, ready, cut, post.
We're going to ask that they come back in and introduce themselves. Great program here.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, Allison.
Hi, I'm Jessica Sike, Dr. Hernandez. I'm a tier sergeant for the KFC Division. I'm Captain Shulik, and I'm with Alpha Company.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bradley Thrasher. I'm our battalion sergeant major.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I am Sergeant Robert Rivera. I am the air ranger.
Welcome. Thank you. There are a couple of other gentlemen that might be introduced as well. First Sergeant Rosias?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. And Lieutenant Colonel Casey. These gentlemen, they are not going to stay with us long because they said something about leaving here, catching a plane at 5:00 this morning, leaving the bus station at 3:00 so that they can go and start competing and gain that ninth national championship. They already have eight. Gentlemen, thank you so much. Be safe.
Thank you, sir.
I just don't think it gets better than that. Can we go now? It's not going to get better. All right, we are now to proclamation and presentation. And Mr. Wadley and Mr. Overdeer are going to assist me with this as we come down to the front.
Do you have a copy of that assignment for the Peachtree thing?
I will be doing the proclamation for Procurement Month, and tonight you're going to hear about our financial report that has been submitted and is up and running, and it is in the minutes, if you are in the agenda, if you'd like to see it. But you will hear when that item is talked about, about the controls that are in place. And let me assure you that Procurement Month and the people who are in our procurement department are the first person that gets to make sure that those controls are in place. And if you don't believe that, try going over there without an approved PO, three bids, a, you know, an apple in a pecan tree somewhere. It's a process, but it's a necessary process, and they do a great job. Let me read this. Whereas procurement professionals ensure efficiency, transparency, and responsible stewardship of taxpayer dollars, and whereas their expertise fosters strong supplier relationships, promotes competition, and minimizes or maximizes value for the community, and whereas the city of Granberry's dedicated procurement team upholds integrity and excellence in public service, and whereas the Institute for Public Procurement has designed March, has designated March as Procurement Month to highlight the vital contributions of procurement professionals in government and education, and whereas this month serves as an opportunity to recognize those who secure quality goods and services that sustain our community, now therefore I, Jim Jarrett, Mayor of the city of Granberry, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2025 as Procurement Month in Granberry, and encourage all citizens to recognize the dedication and impact of procurement professionals. Do you guys want to please step forward and receive this? I should have asked you upfront to come and be here, and then I'd ask that you read it yourself. How are you doing?
Good.
I'm doing great.
Thank you.
And I will let you speak. Do you have something to say?
No, I'm fine.
No?
Listen, it'll...
If I had a, but if I had a PO sign?
Then I would speak.
I'll have one next year. Come on, Kirsty. Somebody. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Well, good evening. It gives me great pleasure to read this proclamation for the Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I just ask all the organizations that support this to come up here while I read So the official proclamation is, whereas children represent the hopes and dreams of the future and deserve to grow and thrive in nurturing environments, free from fear, harm, and victimization, and whereas it is the collective responsibility of our society to protect and support our children, ensuring they are loved, cared for, and provided a safe and secure upbringing, free from verbal, sexual, emotional, and physical abuse or neglect, and whereas in our community, dedicated individuals and organizations, including Mission Granberry, CASA of Hood and Somerville Counties, Peluxi River Children's Advocacy Center, Kids Armor of Hope, the Hood County Crimes Against Children Task Force, the Hood County Sheriff's Department, and the Granberry Police Department, work tirelessly to prevent child maltreatment and provide essential support to families in need. And whereas the success of child abuse prevention efforts depends on strong partnerships among families, social service agencies, schools, faith-based and civic organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, now therefore Jim Jarrett, as Mayor of the city of Granberry, does hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Granberry, and urge all citizens to join in dedicating their energies to cherishing our children by helping them grow and develop free from victimization, so they may mature into successful adults. Furthermore, he urges the community to join Mission Granberry and CASA of Hood and Somerville Counties by participating in Paint the Town Blue during the month of April by displaying a blue ribbon, light, or sponsoring a CASA blue flag, given under his hand and the seal of the city of Granberry on this 18th day of March 2024, Jim Jarrett, Mayor. Who's the lucky recipient?
I'll receive it.
And that means you have to speak.
So I just want to thank you all. So last year in Texas, there were over 370,000 cases of abuse or neglect. And so as all of us work together in Hood County to support our children in the future. So thank you very much.
Were you talking about this one with the bank?
Mission Granberry people that go out there and agree?
Yeah.
I added that to the ground, and the ground lease is a stoppage agreement between PDOT and...
Assignment from PDOT, Granberry.
Yeah, and Granberry 106 Hospitality. That's who they are.
That's a assignment, too. Gentry Mill.
Dean.
Yeah, you found it.
Dean.
He's going to introduce himself, Mr. Glass.
Otherwise, I'll call over.
Whereas sexual assault is a serious crime that impacts individuals of all ages, backgrounds, and abilities, regardless of race or socioeconomic status, and whereas preventing sexual assault requires a fundamental shift in social norms that tolerate violence, calling for the united efforts of individuals, families, institutions, and systems to create meaningful change within our community, and whereas the city of Granberry stands in solidarity with national efforts to raise awareness and support survivors by recognizing Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and whereas Sexual Assault Awareness Month serves as a vital opportunity for citizens to learn about prevention, engage in advocacy, and support organizations such as Mission Granberry, which provide essential services, assistance, and empowerment to survivors, now therefore, in recognition of the important work done by survivors, sexual assault programs, and victims, service providers, Jim Jarrett, the mayor of the city of Granberry, does proclaim, hereby proclaim, April 2025 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and encourages all residents to stand together in the fight against sexual assault, support survivors, and engage in efforts to prevent violence, creating a safer and more compassionate community for all, given under his hand and the seal of the city of Granberry on this 18th day of March 2025, Jim Jarrett, Mayor.
I just want to thank the community for your continued support of Mission Granberry and its... Sorry, that distracted me and all of our programs. So thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, next time it'll be who's not here on Monday. Okay. City Manager Kaufman, you have someone you'd like to recognize?
I'd like to recognize Tammy and all her team on 4.4. We're working as a finalist once again for the best historic small town in America title from USA Today, and ask the community to vote online once a day, every day, with every device you have until March 31st. And so we're fighting it out with Abilene, Kansas, first and second place bouncing back and forth. Please continue to vote. If you haven't voted already, go to the visitgranberry.com website, and you will find a convenient place to click and link to the voting and vote for Granberry. So if we get this, I can't think of another city that's ever been awarded three times or four times the best small historic city in America. So we've done it three years in a row, and we had to lay out because they didn't want us to win it four times in a row. So they let us be back in the running, and the community is supporting. And I'm amazed that I put that post on my LinkedIn page, and I've got people from all over Texas voting for that, and it's pretty cool to see that happen. So you folks that have social media, we appreciate your help, and I know Tammy is excited about this. Also, I wanted to talk about some staff that have done some outstanding things in the community. Yes, somebody say something?
Turn your mic on, please.
Oh, gosh.
Start all over.
Start all over? Could you hear me? Y'all could hear me, the camera didn't need to, so. We don't need the competition knowing how we vote, right? If you were anywhere on, at 4:30 AM Saturday morning, March 8th, you were probably awakened by the hailstorm and the windstorm. We bought a building called the Granberry Historic Square, the city did, last year, and we insured it, and we've been in the process of cleaning up, fixing it, making things better. We got a roof project on it, and here comes the hailstorm right after we get the new shingles on, and they are hail-resistant shingles. I'm not worried about them a bit. But the flat roof had been repaired and was good to go until we replaced it, which was scheduled to happen this week. And but the first thing that morning, I received a text message from the executive director of the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool. That would be like the CEO of State Farm sending me a text message if we insured with State Farm and saying, I heard you had hail. Is there anything we can do to help? So I got that message, and pretty humbling, but I will say it's because we have a good relationship with them, and they know us well. And so they contacted me, and then I said, yes, we need help. And they actually worked with our staff, our internal services staff was at the facility, cleaning up water and working on our tenants there and trying to serve them, to get them going. As you know, we had a big event that Saturday on the square, and the crowds were going to be packed in. So we needed to move fast, and our staff did that, and the internal services staff. That's Aaron McLean and Roy and their team that do all the building maintenance on all of our facilities. Also, the insurance company sent a water remediation team our way, and our tenants were so happy. We had blowers and humidifiers going that morning before the crowds even came, and the crowds that came to Granberry to visit that weekend didn't even know we had a roof problem or a leaking problem. So and also, we were able to reschedule our roofing contractor to come, and they've already been there and put on a new roof, or they're in the process of it a week early. So that was really good. And I can't thank Michael Ross and his leadership on that effort as well. Listen, that Granberry Plaza is a successful location for our community. As you know, it's the front door to our community when you come into the square. We wanted to preserve the historic appearance and the historic use of that building. We've got tenants in there that are small businesses. We want to encourage and keep them. And then as there's vacancies that come above, we use those empty spaces to help other businesses start their business, kind of a business incubator program. And we're really excited about what's going on and how we're able to help these folks. But everybody was extremely happy. Another downside to what's going on when you put on a new roof, sometimes when you have to cut the old damaged water insulation, water damage insulation and boards out, it causes dust inside the building. Kessler's was trying to serve food on Monday, they were, or Tuesday, they were putting on the roof, and there was dust coming down. So I guess it was a Thursday that came down, and the remediation team that was already there moved right into Kessler's and got that cleaned up to where they could open the next day without taking another hiccup. And that was the busy weekend of last weekend. So you know how that goes. But special thanks to all of our staff that are working really hard to take care of our citizens that way, and also for our tenants that are hanging in there and being patient. We've got one tenant that is actually using one of our empty spaces temporarily until her place is restored. So we're fortunate to have a little bit of space there. I want to thank the Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool for being proactive. Holy cow, I can't imagine what we would have done without them and what they provided and the contractors. And what's really nice is these contractors have special pricing for the insurance company. It's a kind of cooperative, it's not an insurance, but it's a cooperative risk pool, and they travel throughout the state, and they have special pricing, much cheaper than if we would have gone out on the free market and brought in someone else. So it helps keep our insurance rates lower. Last, well, not last, but next to last, I want to recognize that same day, our electric distribution crew hit the streets at 4:30 that morning and started having outages, had to replace some poles that had blown down, and they worked until about 9:30 that night. But at the end of the day, I got a text that said all power has been restored for our customers. So way to go, electric crew. And then we've got a little video that I'd like to show. I want to brag, while it's playing, I want to brag about our staff at the David Southern Lake, David Southern Lake Granberry Conference Center. As you know, we have different events there all the time. But with just five full-time and one part-time city employee led by Mike Linnaberry, they recruit and host about 120 events a year, welcoming over 25,000 guests for everything from meetings to trade shows to celebration, community gatherings. Their hard work supports dozens of local businesses. They make quick, dramatic transformations like this one yesterday morning about 25 times a year to ensure every event runs smoothly. So they have to start real early to still have it ready for the noon meeting. Many times a year that happens. So a big thank you to Mike Linnaberry and all the workers and the big team that we have at the conference center. So we're very appreciative of our work. And I hope you saw that new carpet.
Yeah. Thank you, sir. Others? Eddie? Anybody? Anybody? I think we can, who took that video? You guys?
A time-lapse camera.
Oh.
But you put it together. Yes.
Yeah. Well, take a, yeah.
Our security cameras took the video.
No?
No.
You set it up then.
It's a little, it's a little camera about this size, and it's battery-operated, takes a picture every minute.
Well, who signed the purchase order on that?
Michael Ross.
Very good. Thank you. Well done. No others? Ms. Walker, do we have anyone for five public comments? No? Then I'll skip over reading that, and we will go to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Does anyone have any item that they would like to pull off? We have the minutes, ordinance adoption to the animal control, and approval of the annual support and maintenance for the Granberry Regional Radio Network.
Mayor, I just got a, I just got a comment.
Okay.
Mayor, I just want to say how much we appreciate the staff, the leadership here at Granberry, and the police department for bringing the Granberry Regional Radio Network to the city. That was something that the council had to approve and make a decision whether we wanted to invest into that, into this system. And I'm just surprised that it's paid for itself over and over, and it continues to grow with the leadership that is at the police station and here at City Hall. So thank you very much.
So just to add to that, Mayor, there's about 1,100 radios on this network now. So we're partnering with neighboring communities and counties, and they're paying their fair share to help us offset the cost internally. So it's, it's, this was in our budget, it's on the consent agenda, but it just gets, just keeps improving monthly as we continue to grow.
Right. And it's, you say it pays, it pays for itself. At the same time, every community out there, including the city of Granberry, are getting the advantages of bulk purchases, and those, you know, it's advantageous, not only is the strategic and, you know, the communications advantage there, there's a cost advantage to us all as well. It's good working together. All right. So anybody want to pull anything off of the consent agenda? Or Mr. Overdeer?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a, I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There are no nays, so we will pass that 6-0. We'll move to the deliberation agenda. We have a presentation by the city of Granberry of the annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year 2023 and 2024. Mr. Kaufman?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Eva Gregory, our Director of Finance and our Chief Financial Officer, and let her introduce her guests and auditors, and let her stand up there after he's through and answer any questions y'all may have.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. We are here to present the ACFR, we call it, annual comprehensive financial statement. You can also find that on the website now. It has been posted. So if you go to granberry.org/acfr2024, you will be able to pull it up. And as you know, per our charter, we are required to have an independent audit completed each year. Our fiscal year ends September 30th each year, and Patilo Brown and Hill completed the audit for us. They had reviewed our financial statements, audited our financial statements, tested our processes, and tested our internal controls. Thank you, internal controls. And so at this time, I will turn the floor over to Cameron. Aaron, he's with Patilo Brown and Hill, and he will give you highlights of the financial report.
Thank you, Eva. Thank you, city council members, for choosing us as your auditors. We enjoy being your auditor. it, annual comprehensive financial statement. You can also find that on the website now. It has been posted. So, if you go to granberry.org/acfr2024, you will be able to pull it up. And as you know, per our charter, we are required to have an independent audit completed each year. Our fiscal year ends September 30th each year. And Patilo Brown and Hill completed the audit for us. They had reviewed our financial statements, audited our financial statements, tested our processes and tested our internal controls. Thank you, internal controls. And so, at this time, I will turn the floor over to Cameron. Aaron, he's with Patilo Brown and Hill, and he will give you highlights of the financial report.
Thank you, Ava. Thank you, city council members, for choosing us as your auditors. We enjoy being your auditors and working with Ava and the finance team. Went well this year, like it has in the past. There were no big major changes to generally accepted accounting principles this year that affected the city. And I'd like to jump in just on page, it shows our audit opinion. It was an opinion letter on page one of the report. And in the second paragraph, it says, "In our opinion, the accompanying financial statements present fairly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business-type activities, each major fund and aggregate remaining fund information for the city of Granberry as of September 30th, 2024." So, that is an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion saying that these are materially correct. So, that's the highest level of assurance that we can give to these financial statements. So, congratulations. The other letters, there's two at the back. You don't necessarily need to jump to them, but I'll just briefly describe them. There's a letter that talks about internal controls where we tested, we basically come out during interim work and then we have a separate time after field work, after the year ends, where we come out and test, do more control testing at each department. We're kind of doing walkthroughs, assessing different risk areas for our audit and figuring out what those internal controls in place are. And then we test them to make sure that we can rely on them as auditors for our work. And if there are any, we're also required to test them in accordance with guidelines. But if there were any internal control deficiencies or material weaknesses that we found, they would be in that letter at the back. But there are no issues that we found. The next letter is the city spent more than $750,000 in federal awards grant money for fiscal year 2024. And we have to, there's a calculation that's, federal requirements tell us what we have to do, these calculations, and pick grants, ones that haven't been tested in the last two years, or maybe ones that's, one specific grant there was more than $750,000 in expenditures for the year. So, this year, we tested the coronavirus state local fiscal recovery funds, COVID-19 money that's still being utilized and I think is the end of it, Ava, it's been it all. So, that'll, that'll go away going forward. But there are also no internal control deficiencies that we've found specific to that grant or compliance issues. And when we do a single audit over these grants, you'll see on page 136, there's a nice little cheat sheet, a rundown of our opinions that we've given, an unmodified opinion, no internal controls, the specific grant that we tested, and you are low risk as an audity. So, congratulations on those findings. I guess, next, I'd just like to touch on the financial position of the city. And it's, there's a statement of, a statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance for the governmental funds. It's the income statement, starting on page 25 and 26. And it shows your general fund there. Ending fund balance for the year, just for the general fund, was 19 million. And I think the page, two pages before that shows how much of that money is unassigned, it's unrestricted, that can be used for any purposes you want to going forward. There's an unassigned fund balance of 14.5 million. So, normally, when readers of the financial statements, granting agencies, other banks, bonding agencies, they'll look at that month, that number and compare it to the 23.4 million that was spent during the year and just kind of see how many months worth you have going forward. So, that's, you know, 75% of the year. I think most cities and counties are shooting somewhere between two and six months. So, that's a really healthy fund balance going forward. If y'all have any other questions for, oh, there's another letter. This one's just a communication letter that we're required to give to y'all. We can either say this verbally or just write it out and hand it to y'all. It seems to be easier. It just kind of lays out responsibilities for parties involved. But there were no, any other kind of issues that we would have to put in there as well. It's pretty much the same as it was last year. So, if y'all have any questions for me or Ava, I'd be happy to answer those.
Council? Any specific question? Congratulations to Ms. Gregory and that entire staff because I know that they'll start working on next year's book tomorrow. They didn't do it later, earlier today. No, outstanding work. I tell people I've worked for four top 100 corporations and this is, this, and long before I got here, this is, Mr. Kaufman and the staff have been putting this together for, how long have you been winning the awards, Ava? 22 years, 20?
I've only been here less than 20, but, you know, I think they've been receiving the awards even before that. Yes, they have.
Great. You know, the excellence of the financial group is well-known throughout the city, I think throughout the county, probably throughout the state. And we, you know, we should be pleased and congratulations again to you and your staff. We are, we certainly, the council are appreciative. Other comments? Questions? Okay. Well, this was information only. There is no action required, correct? Okay. Appreciate you coming down, spending time with us.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
If I may add, I just remembered that I wanted to mention that, that each year after the annual financial report is posted, we also go back and do like a little summary book that will be also posted online. It's called the Popular Financial Report that will be sent out to you as soon as it's completed.
So, so those who don't want to read the 195 pages here, we'll get a shortened version?
Yeah.
Good.
We do that every year and it's real user-friendly. We encourage everyone to look at it because it's so easy to read and so easy to understand exactly where we're at. And it's so transparent to the public to help them understand what their local government is up to.
Mm-hmm.
Way to go, Fay.
I forgot, I forgot to say to put your phone on stun this. I can't, I can't complain.
Can we find $50?
No, I can't, I didn't say, I didn't say.
Spin the wheel. That's right.
I couldn't say. All right. Thank you. Okay.
Let me say something.
Yes, sir.
Ava and her finance team that worked tirelessly about this audit, this all happens at the same time they're closing out the year end and it also is when they're beginning the new budget cycle. So, there's a lot of moving parts in, besides our normal day-to-day business in that finance department. And, you know, statutorily, we've got to get this presented to y'all. This month, before six months is up from our annual fiscal year ending. And so, there's a lot of moving parts. Ava, thank you for all the extra hours that you put in on this and your staff. I know that, that even Elizabeth, working remote, works like crazy to help pull all this together as well. So...
Yes. And I'd like to also recognize Kristi Allen. She is my assistant finance director. She's sitting back there. She's been with the city since May, April, May? Not very long, but she dived in and she completely owned all the leases and SPITAs that you've seen in the book and you wonder what those are. The reporting for that is just insanely complicated. So, she took over all that reporting and with that, Kristi Russell, ensuring that all the purchasing is done correctly, all the documentation is received and helping all the departments with their purchasing needs and resources that she provides is just priceless.
And all that is so critical to a great opinion in this document. We couldn't get there without y'all.
Right. Because when the auditors are here, they have us pull all these checks, the backups, and ensuring that the procurement was done correctly.
Yeah.
So, we have passed, right, Cameron?
It's a lot of questions and a lot of paper we have to look at.
And we appreciate y'all coming and working with us and being one of the leading city government auditors in the state, helping us through this.
Appreciate it. Thank you.[1215.65][1215.65][applause] Okay. We're going to all take a deep breath here because we're going to go to the deliberation agenda where we consider adopting resolution number 25-07, determining the cost of certain authorized improvements to be financed within the Lakeway Landing Public Improvement District, approving a preliminary service plan and assessment plan, including a proposed improvement area number one, assessment role, improvement area number two, assessment role, and improvement area number three, assessment role, directing the filing of the proposed assessment roles with the city secretary and providing for noticing and calling three public hearings on April 15, 2025 to consider ordinances leaving assessments on property located within the Lakeview Landing Public Improvement District. Mr. Kaufman, do you have your mic on?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is brought back to you from being previously tabled about 60 days ago. Everything is in position now to move forward with this project and staff recommends the approval of this resolution. We'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. You know, this has been a long time coming. We've worked on this project since 2019.
Okay. Council, questions for Mr. Kaufman?
I believe I have the attorney Travis Little here. Lidle Little? Lidle. Here, if y'all have any questions, he's here to answer those as well. So, appreciate you being here, sir.
Welcome, Mr. Lidle. I, Mr. Kaufman, I have, I do not have any questions because this was covered in, well, this is, like you say, 60 days ago. And Mr. Ross brought us up to speed again yesterday as there were a couple of questions. Like, one of them was, you know, it's about what's out here. And one of them was the townhomes, the 20-foot lots. But that's, you know, we see it and we understand it, I believe.
So, just for the benefit of the public, this is an area that is probably undeveloped to most folks because of the cost to engineer and work with the core engineers to save this land and repurpose this land from being a floodway to hauling in enough fill and storm remediation to make it where it's above the flood plain by two feet. So, it's a huge undergoing of redevelopment in an area that would not normally be developed. We've been working on this plan development since 2019 and we're ready to, they've, they've done everything they need to do. They've got their financing in place on their side of the fence. This sets the table to move forward to work with the bonds for the PID, which are funded wholly by the PID, not by the rest of the taxpayers of the community. And so, it, how do you say it? It atomizes those bond indebtedness to that development. And so, there's an extra tax because it's charged to each property or lot that will service that debt. And so, the rest of the citizens never have to worry about servicing the debt on this development. Pretty, pretty good tool to get something that was undeveloped developed.
And just memory refreshes, these, the, those payments are upfront, correct? When you buy a lot or not?
On the residential pieces, the developer is going to give money to where it does not apply to the homeowners. So, the debt will be serviced in some other way. I'm not sure the details of how that happens, but there is a, a system set up within the development plan and the development agreement that been executed a couple of years ago to take care of that situation. These are tax-exempt bonds. And so, there's a special way that we had to address that to maintain that tax-exempt status.
Okay.
Travis, do I need to add anything to that? You good?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
I just have, as I looked over this plan again for the, probably the third time. It shows, and I think it's on page 48, it shows the, all those townhomes that are going to be on the 20-foot lots. Is that what those are, townhomes on the 20-foot lots?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Where are all those people going to park?
They have rear-entry garages under part of their townhome.
Into the townhome itself?
Yes.
Okay.
Is the way I understand it. I haven't seen the actual elevation of the project yet, other than what you've got there. But they do have a driveway at the back of their home.
Okay.
They'll pull in and have their parking garage under it.
Good. Other questions? No? Let me go ahead and call for a vote on resolution number 25-07. And do it, just have one vote here, just handle the, okay. As printed out here on the, on the screen. So, this is, do I hear a motion to pass resolution number 25-07?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion. Overdare makes a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. That will be passed 6-0. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you.
Mr. Lidle, thank you, sir. Okay, moving to 7.3. Consider appointing members to the Historic Preservation Commission to fill vacancies. And we have two, well, we have four vacancies, I believe. And we have two people to step forward wanting to be nominated for this. And, or do we have three? We have two? We have two. Okay. Since we have two and don't, we need four, is there, and all candidates meet the requirements, is there a motion to accept or to appoint these two members to the Historic Preservation Commission?
So moved.
Mr. Overdare makes a motion.
Second.
Mr. Ullam seconds. All in favor of having Patty Caraway and Kevin Scroggins appointed to the Texas, or to the Historic Preservation Commission, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I hear no nays. So, congratulations to Ms. Caraway and Mr. Scroggins. Okay. 7.4 is to consider appointing members to the Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustments and Appeals Board to fill vacancies. And this is where we've identified that we need three or four more, but the, the needs are very specific, as in, we need insurance agent, electrician, and plumber. We have two people that have been approached and have accepted being nominated. They are Ms. Jamie Stamper, I believe Ms. Stamper is here. Thank you. And Ms. Angela Parker, Packer?
Parker.
Parker. And I understand both of you are, is Ms. Parker here?
She's not.
And I understand that both are signing up for the insurance. You sure you're not an electrician? No? Okay. Would you like to comment on why you'd like to be on this board? This is the, where am I getting? This is the Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustments and Appeals Board, which we need more.
And as long as I don't have to submit a PO, I'm good.
Oh, well.
Hello, my name is Jamie Stamper, and I have lived in Granberry for about 12 years now with my husband. We've got four kids and nine grandkids. We really enjoy being here in Granberry. I have served and continue to serve on the, I actually live in Dead Cordeva, Bend Estates. So, I serve on the security committee there with the, with the club and then also the membership committee as well. And one other, one other board position. But in April, the only one that I will be continuing to serve on will be the security committee. Committee for De Cordova. I have been in the insurance and risk management industry for my entire life, my entire career. That's all I've done. I'm an insurance geek, and I don't know what else to tell you. I am a licensed insurance agent, my, but I don't, I don't actively sell insurance. Where I work, obviously does, but I'm on the consulting side, which is very much different than being a producer or selling the policy. So my clients are more in oil and gas, general contractors, owners, engineering, and I'm, and so that's, that's who I do consulting work with. So my job really is to do some risk transfer work, to make sure that my clients are protected, and to transfer that risk as it, as it is allowed under the Texas legislature. So obviously, my firm can sell insurance, but that's just not where my, my passion is. My passion is more on the consulting side of the game board. Because I've just been doing this for such a long time, I think that my previous experience will sit well, and hopefully, you know, provide some, some more insight to perhaps what we can do better, or perhaps what we maybe should change or not change. I'm certainly not here to revamp everything, that's not my role. I stay in my own lane, but if anybody needs some help, I'm obviously here to help them.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for doing that. Anyone that wants to speak on Ms. Parker's behalf?
I will.
Okay, Mr. Wadley?
She's a city resident. They lived in the city for 14 years. She's been an insurance agent for 30 years, and she does more like home, home insurance, home mortgages and things like that. Or not, not mortgages, but home, home insurance and auto and stuff. And, and I actually approached her with the thought that with what this group does here in town, it's more about buildings in town, and I just thought she'd be appropriate.
Others? Commenting on others? So.
Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
Ms. Stamper, on your application, you put that you vote in the city. Did you meant like in the city of De Cordova, or did you meant in the city of Granberry?
In the city of De Cordova, I mean, at De Cordova resident. So there's some elections that I can vote in, I think with the city, maybe with the schools, and things like that. And then there's others where I just vote for the application.
Okay.
So it's, I think it's a little, a little above, really.
Yeah.
And the other thing is just, for a point, is that, that my experience is in the property casualty, so it's in the business.
Okay.
It's in the business, I mean, I'm not, not personalized.
And.
Yes, sir.
In the length of residence, can you come back to the podium, sorry? I just want to make sure that the public gets to hear. You said length of residence in the city that's still in De Cordova?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And we've lived there for 12 years.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And this, counsel, if you'll help me out on this, this position does not require to live in the city? It does, it does not require.
Okay.
Many, most of ours do.
Okay. All right.
So do I hear nominations? Mr. Overdare, do you have your mic?
No, I don't. Oh, no. Sorry. Mayor.
Mr. Wadley?
I nominate Angela Parker.
Okay, I have a nomination for Ms. Angela Parker. Do I hear other nominations? No? No? Okay. I hear no other nominations. All in favor of Ms. Angela Parker being appointed to the, I have to go back to the long words here, the Building Standards, Plumbing Adjustments and Appeals Board, say aye, and raise your hand, so we get a count. And we have 6-0. Ms. Stamper, we have other opportunities, and your name is here. Expect to call. Seriously, very seriously. Thank you so much, you're having. So Ms. Parker? Yes, Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, can I make a comment?
Sure.
Ms. Stamper, thank you for applying. I really appreciate it. You know, we, we go through these, and we pick out members for the city, on the city boards, and sometimes we don't have enough applicants. But I just want to say, continue to serve your city, continue to be, just continue to be proactive. If you want to be on, on one of our commissions, we'd love to have you. Just sometimes, I've been on the receiving end of, of one of these commissions. I just ask that you just continue to try to serve our community, and thank you, really, we really thank you for applying.
Yes. And Ms. Stamper, there will be really no need to share with the mayor of De Cordova that we've been recruiting you. Okay? Thank you. All right. Okay. We are now to the executive session, there being no other business to be handled here. So I now declare that the Granberry City Council is convened into open session. All members are present. The city council will go into closed session, pursuant to provisions of Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. Section 55107-1, consultation with attorney pending contemplated litigation. 55107-2, deliberation regarding real property. 551.07-4, personnel matters, city manager compensation. Section 551.08-7, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations. So we are in executive session. I now declare that the Granberry City Council reconvenes into open session. It is 9:32 PM. There was no action taken in the closed session. All council members are present. Counsel, do we have any other business to handle here?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wadley?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize a city manager to execute an assignment with Beach Fork Agriculture LLC to assign the current development draw agreement to Pirates Cove Real Estate LLC.
Seconded by Mr. Overdare. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that passes 6-0.
Oh, aye. I was reading, I didn't say aye.
Passes 5-0.
No, it passes 6-0.
6-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wadley?
I'd like to make, make a motion to authorize a city manager to execute a development agreement with Mary Ann Williamson Trust for the upsizing of the sewer main from eight inches to 12 inches in support of future development, and to amend the FIA with Mary Ann Williamson Trust to properly identify said cost allocation.
Mr. Overdare, second, sub motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that passes 6-0.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wadley?
I would like to make a motion to authorize a city manager to enter into an assignment from PDOF Granberry LLC to Gentry Mills and execute the ground lease estoppel and a great agreement.
Second.
Mr. Overdare, second, sub? Good discussion? Any? None? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, that will pass 6-0. Is there other? Nothing else? No other business? There being no further business, I announce this meeting adjourned.